Thank you, everyone, for being with us tonight. We'll call this month's meeting of the Board of Commissioners open, and we'll ask Rodney Pierce, our 911 Director and Associate Pastor at Bear Creek Baptist Church, to come up and do the invocation for us.
Let's pray. God, our heavenly Father, we just thank you for this opportunity to conduct business of this county, Father God. We are just so thankful for the freedom that you allow us to just conduct this government, Father God, and we thank you for the men and women that have dedicated their lives to protect that freedom. Father God, we ask a blessing upon this board as they seek guidance and wisdom from you, Father God, and discernment. We pray, God, a special blessing upon them each individually as they have personally sacrificed their personal time, their personal commitments, Father God, for a desire to make this great county even greater. Father God, we just thank you and praise you for this opportunity. We pray that you will be with them as they conduct the business of this meeting. Father God, that you will just guide them, just be with us through this entire process. For us in your holy name, we pray, Lord Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Rodney.
Now, we want to call on RC Athie to do our pledge for us. We'd like to say a little something about our great veterans as they come in to do the pledge for us. RC grew up in Kulumi. He's a class of Davie, 1970. March of 1971, he joined the United States Air Force. Two tours in Vietnam in 1972. Toured in Thailand, 1973 and '75. Also tours in Okinawa, Hawaii with the Virginia ROTC. And also in Georgia. He retired in October of '91 with his 10-year commitment. The awards that he has been honored with: Meritorious Service Medal, Accommodation Medal, National Defense Service Medalion and Star, Good Conduct Medal, Four Devices, Vietnam Service Medal. His duties were security and law enforcement, and now he is a member of the VFW honor guard. Please join us. Please welcome him.
Please stand and salute, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, RC.
Ethics and conflict disclosure, Mr. Vogler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pursuant North Carolina General Statute 168, Act 86, and Davie County Board of Commissioners' Code of Ethics adopted December the 2nd, 2019, I'd ask to each of you one, before you adopt the agenda, if there's any actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest with respect to any matter on the proposed agenda which may come to you before a vote tonight. So please speak up and let the board know at this time. Mr. Chair, seeing no one speak up, I conclude there's no actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest for any board member.
Thank you, Mr. Vogler. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Ms. Finney, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Renninger, all in favor? Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Public comment period. Mr. Vogler?
Yes. We've had four individuals, actually, three individuals sign up, but one individual said he wanted to speak on two different topics, and also he'll present that when he comes up. The first one is Mr. Todd Mears of tax concern. And Mr. Mears, you may come forward. State your name for the board at the podium, so that goes down, and I will be keeping time. And what I will do is, after one minute, I'll show you that you've got two minutes remaining, and so forth on down.
Good evening. My name is Todd Mears. I am the owner of Mears Construction Incorporated. I had moved here 25 years ago from an economically depressed area in upstate New York to start my business. North Carolina and Davie County have helped me achieve that goal with its pro-business and pro-growth policies. In business, I try to limit my risk of exposure to liabilities because they can lead to financial loss. I believe county government should do the same. We all know the current climate with social conservative movement towards libraries. Just do a quick Google search. If this board is latching on to this movement in America, it will only lead to a huge financial risk, potential loss, and a divided community. Let's not forget our former governor, Pat McCrory, in the bathroom bill, which some analysts estimate cost North Carolina over $3 billion and his political career. Let's not forget all the lawsuits of tax money spent within the town of Moxville and the issues at the Advance Fire Department last year. Hasn't this community paid enough for bad decisions by our government officials? Haven't we had enough bad press in the papers and TV? Last month, you reported one of these people involved in these lawsuits to a county board. Looks like we're already making the same mistakes again. I'm concerned about the commissioners' newfound interest in the library when there are other more pressing issues that will generate revenue and not create financial loss. Perhaps commissioners could spend more time helping the county tax office, where for two years, 2017 and '18, they didn't properly record my business personal property assets and didn't collect the county tax. Our accountant complied with the recent countywide audit, which found the tax office's errors. Taxes will now be collected, but we assume the penalties and interest, which we will fight, costing our business and county taxpayers' money to settle the issue. How many more errors were made and revenue not collected? In preparation for this meeting, I read over tonight's budget presentation. If I'm reading it correctly, I'm shocked to see an 8.4 or $361,000 increase in county employee health costs. I did some research, and it seems the national average for healthcare increase in the last year is around 3.5%. Furthermore, the average former premium across America has increased 20% in the last six years. In Davie County, we've increased 21.4% in just the last three. This kind of increase is not sustainable. Perhaps the commissioners could look into insurance issues within the county. In closing, as a property and business owner, I don't mind paying taxes. In fact, I pay a lot of taxes, and it's all but one of my 15 hard-working employees lives and spends their income here. I look at taxes as an investment in our community. When taxes are used properly, we all benefit from them. When I see mismanagement of tax dollars, I am less likely to invest in this county. And other businesses will do the same. The pro-business and growth policies that brought us here will no longer exist.
Next on the schedule is Jason Key. Jason?
How are you guys today? I miss Finney. At this time, I want to give a little bit of praise to something that's caught me at heart, and I know you guys praise individual organizations throughout this county from time to time, but Davie Little League, I don't know if you guys have paid much attention to that right there. I've been blessed to have two kids that come through Davie Little League, spent a lot of time down there, spent a lot of time as a coach, helped out and volunteered throughout there whenever the times weren't so great. But I see now that what Mr. Riddle and his group of people that he's got behind him are doing awesome things. One thing has truly caught me, they've opened up a few years ago a challenger league, which is for kids that are in poor health, things of that other natures, or that are mentally incompetent, that they've started out and created a league just for those kids, and it's caught on real well. And they're trying now to build a challenger league field for these kids to play with. I would hope that maybe the county could come in and kick in some funds for that, and if not, you, the taxpayers, I know they're asking for donations on Facebook and throughout. I'm going to go ahead and pledge up the first $100, and I hope that anybody that is listening here will at least do the same to help get this league going and help this field become a reality for Davie County. I think it speaks volumes. These kids are the future of this county, and for those kids there especially, I think they need an extra hand throughout. So I'd like to challenge all of Davie County to at least pledge something towards this challenger league field to help it get up and going. So thank you for that part.
Next, we have Mrs. Julie Whitaker.
Good evening. I'm still Julie Whitaker. At your May meeting, the Library Board of Trustees spoke because their nominee was rejected and replaced without respectful communication with them or the library director. This situation is of interest to me. Viewing the trustees' minutes reveals incidents of persons entering our library who engage in disruptive behavior and intimidate staff about materials of which they disapprove. By March, the trustees learned of low staff morale. Due to that harassment, materials owned for all citizens of Davie County have been misplaced and abused by an organized yet anonymous group targeting certain materials available in the library. Unacceptable. As a citizen invested in the library, I expect library users to be civil regarding the ownership and the rights of other library users. I expect the staff to feel safe and treated courteously. I also expect persons appointed to serve as trustees to be knowledgeable about libraries, their mission and purpose, as well as local, state, and national library policies and standards. I expect county commissioners to be concerned about these issues while relying on their advisors for accurate information and specific training and expertise. I do not expect our library to be subjected to any political partisanship. Consulting the county's website on commissioners, advisory boards, and committees, again on June 1st, the listing shows 16 bodies in service to you. The data show 27 vacancies with at least 13 expired terms overdue for appointments. For an irrational and unexplained reason, the library gained attention over these other vacancies. From your documented code of ethics, board members must always remain aware that at various times they play different roles: as legislators who balance the public interest and the private rights in considering and enacting ordinances and orders and resolutions; as decision-makers who arrive at fair and impartial quasi-judicial and administrative determination. Librarians use the ALA professional code of ethics. Especially applicable to this situation are: We provide the highest standard of service to all library users. We uphold the principles of intellectual freedom and resist all effort to censor library resources. We do not advance private interests at the expense of library users. We distinguish between our personal convictions and professional duties, and we affirm the inherent worth and dignity and rights of every person.
Mr. Chair, that's the only individuals that signed up tonight.
Did Jason have another subject he wanted to speak on?
He had two subjects, but he only spoke on one.
Do you want to speak on the other subject, Jason?
I mean, we're going to start...
I mean, he signed up on two different lines, so I don't know how you handle that.
If you sign up on 10 lines for 10 different subjects, so you...
Did he have time left?
Yes, he did. He had about a minute and a half.
Go ahead, Jason.
Now, I want to change subjects, and I don't want anything that I'm speaking on this time to hurt the other subject that I spoke with within the people inside this room. As most of you know, I'm also the fire chief of Weimar Davie Fire Department. I've, in talking, approached you, board people, or board personnel, within the thoughts of the quarter-sent sales tax to be used for fire departments and emergency services within the county. I know that tonight is supposedly, I'm not sure whether or not you guys are going to approve the funding for the next fiscal year, but however moving forward within that, it takes a vote from the county. The last time it was proceeded, it was failed through county vote. I think we need better time to better educate our personnel and our citizens of what this money's going to go forth and move forward through. So I don't want this to just be something that is approved and passed six months down the road where it only gives us six months to educate our personnel because it has to become back on the ballot in the 2024 or 2026. Right now, within that funding mechanism, it should bring in over $1 million to this county yearly within that quarter-sent sales tax, and I'd like to see it to be pushed through to help the emergency services organizations, specifically the fire departments within capital needs. I think there's a strong presence for capital need improvements within the fire departments. Stations should be at the top of the list within that capital improvements plan. So I'm not really asking for it to be approved tonight, but I don't want it to be left out and thrown up six months later to be approved for.
Is that it, Mr. Vogler?
Yes.
All right. Public hearings. Mr. Barnett, DFA, extension of requirements for incentives.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I'm going to tag-team this with our Economic Development Director, Terry Brawley, for the first and the second public hearings tonight.
You just want me to make comments before?
Sure, go ahead.
I think all of you have had a copy of it. We have two new industries that have come to Davie County, most recently Paltronics and DFA. DFA is a supplier to BMW, Mercedes, and Volkswagen. Both of these companies are running into issue in terms of hiring, the number of people they need. According to our agreement, they fully plan to hire those people. They've also run into supply chain issues in terms of finding conductors and transformers and wiring to go in the electrical. So they've asked us to, for you to consider tonight, extending the dates in their contract, and I'll remind you that these are performance-based contracts, so there was no harm to the public. If they don't perform, they don't get paid. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
I don't have a question. I just have a statement. I've already shared this with Terry. I don't have a problem giving these companies a little bit more time. My concern is, are we ever going to have the workforce? And that's what Terry and I talked about before, so we may have to revisit this in a different direction in a year.
Yep. Absolutely. But, you know, they're doing what they can, but I really think some of the equipment piece is the bigger part of this issue in terms of getting them up in production. Yep. And hopefully, they're going to pay a great wage that will attract those workers to this area.
I believe, if I'm correct, Terry, DFA is very close to their numbers.
They are.
Paltronics has been the issue of equipment and being able to get up and going.
Yep. They just haven't got their production up and going. Their already, their orders are backed out for three years. Once they're in production, they're already sold out for three years.
Any other questions or comments?
Just have one more comment. I would like to say, as somebody who depends on being able to get materials, I understand why they are so backed up because there are things out there that I've been quoted that have been six months behind in what I do. So I know it's a year and a half behind on some of the products that we need to get for the county even.
Even the electrical companies like Energy United and Duke Energy, I mean, for them to build transmission lines in here, I mean, some of the wiring's backordered for nine and 10 months. Transformer's the same way.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Vogler?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Chairman's announced this is day and hour of the public hearing pursuant to Chapter 158 of the General Statutes of North Carolina of an Amendment to the Economic Development Incentive Agreement, DFA U.S. Incorporated, to allow for additional time to complete the required jobs and capital expenditures under the previous agreement due to COVID-19 pandemic. There has been due notice given pursuant to the requirements of North Carolina General Statutes and Davie County Code of Ordinance by way of due publication of notices. The public hearing in a newspaper with general circulation in Davie County, the clerk has attached an affidavit showing publication of said paper in your documents. I would ask to all who wish to comment this public hearing to come forward to the podium, state your full name for the board and then comment on the proposal. Mr. Chair, seeing no one come forward, I would now turn the public hearing back over to you as the board chair to close the public comment section of this public hearing, provide the board the opportunity to discuss among yourselves what, if any, action you wish to take with regard to this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Vogler. Do I have a motion to go out, the public comment period? Mr. Renninger, Ms. Chauv second. All right. All in favor? Unanimous? Okay. Now, we will stand for a motion on the proposal.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Poindexter makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Finney makes the second. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor? Unanimous? All right. We'll just move right on to Paltronics. Yep.
I thought you did them both at once.
No.
Paltronics, you know, they've told us they're going to create 203 jobs. They're having the same problem in terms of getting in production. The South Koreans have invested more than $20 million in addition into that plant. So, you know, they're asking for the same extension. The dates are, I think Ed's already put them into the amendment, into the contract, but they're moving out those guaranteed jobs over a year. I'd be glad to answer any questions. I can remind you what they do. They make the pallets that go in the food and drug industry. They're the ones that are sold out for three years. It measures the temperature, the weight of the product that's out there. They will not sell you the pallet. They will rent it to you. And they're big in the food and drug industry. A unique product.
Any questions or comments?
This is also performance-based. It is. And nothing has been paid out to any of these companies because they've got to perform first. They got to create the jobs, create the investment, pay the taxes, then the incentives kick in.
Any other questions or comments? All right, Mr. Vogler.
Chair has announced this is day and hour of the public hearing pursuant to Chapter 158 of the General Statutes of North Carolina for an Amendment to the Economic Development Incentive Agreement of Paltronics Incorporated, to allow for additional time to complete the required jobs and capital expenditures under the previous agreement due to COVID-19 pandemic. There has been due notice given pursuant to the requirements of North Carolina General Statutes and Davie County Code of Ordinance by way of publication of notice of the public hearing in a newspaper with general circulation in Davie County. The clerk has attached an affidavit showing the publication in this paper. I would ask all who wish to comment at this public hearing to come forward, state your name for the board, and then comment on the proposal. Mr. Chair, seeing no one come forward, I would now turn the public hearing back over to you as board chair to close the public comment section of this public hearing, to provide the board the opportunity to discuss among yourself what, if any, action you wish to take with regards to this matter.
Do we have a motion to close public comment? Ms. Poindexter?
Second.
Ms. Finney, second. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor? Okay. Now, we will entertain motion on the proposal to extend the requirements.
Make the motion that we extend the requirement.
Okay.
An extension.
Okay. Ms. Chauv makes the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Renninger, seconds. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay. Thank you, Terry. We really appreciate all you do. Next, thank you, Ms. Athie. Next, zoning map amendment.
Thank you, Chairman and Board. Tonight, I present zoning map amendment DC 23-C3-0008. The applicant is Jordan Budd. The request is to rezone approximately 2.65 acres from residential 20, R20, to highway business conditional for the intended use of warehousing self-storage as defined in the Davie County zoning ordinance. The property is located at 4748 U.S. Highway 601 North and is further described as Davie County Tax Parcel C3000008. The current zoning district is R20. The land use plan identifies this area as rural residential. As stated before, the applicant is Jordan Budd. The current land use is a multifamily residential type use, and the proposed land use is commercial warehousing self-storage. As the surrounding property, the zoning, as you can see, the majority of the zoning around it to the north is R20 and is currently residential. To the west of the property is vacant property, it's R20 as well. And to the south and the east of the property, which is the corner of 801, that is neighborhood business zoning. That's where the Dollar General is located there in reference to that. The property was originally zoned as R20 in 1973. The proposed zoning is a conditional, with the condition being the intended use would be highway business, and the sole use would be for warehousing self-storage as defined in the Davie County zoning ordinance. The site will use public water and private septic. The property in the comprehensive plan is designated as rural residential. The Davie County Growth Enhancement Strategy identifies this as a rural growth area. The specific condition that should be, that was agreed upon, was the intended use of the property is for warehousing self-storage. Tonight, I ask this board, you have three conditions. You can approve the rezoning with conditions. Both parties have to agree to both conditions. You can deny, or you can defer. And at the May 23rd Davie County Planning Board meeting, the zoning map amendment was approved unanimously, and at this time, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that this board has.
Any questions?
I have a question. Does he have a site plan? Does he have any type of photos that we might see what this is going to look like?
Yeah. The applicant is here, and I think he presented those, some render artists kind of rendering now. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry.
and the roadway? You're just going to put as many buildings on there as you possibly can on that piece of property?
No, ma'am.
That's what it kind of looks like.
Well, from the photo here, there's some natural buffer zones between Mr. Albright's property, which is north of the property, also natural buffer zones behind the property between subject property and Dollar General, and then obviously 801's on the south side, and there's a tree line there. The photos that you've seen in those packets there, those were actually taken seven, when the property was listed, about 780 days ago. And just to kind of show where the property was then, and it's, if you're passed by over the years, it's worse than the photos you see there now. So there are some natural buffering zones. As far as the front line of the property, there is going to be a little bit of grading that needs to be done to more so level the lot. It's already pretty level. The gentleman directly across the road from the property, Mr. Blair, he might be here. He was here at the planning meeting. He had a couple of concerns. Mrs. Driver across the road had a couple of concerns with buffer zones, and as well as Mr. Albright, and I'd be happy to go over those concerns and how we're going to address them if it's time.
I believe that's kind of what you're asking.
I feel like I probably share those concerns.
Yeah, of course.
Because how this drawing looks right here is that your buildings are going to be almost all the way up to the roadway.
Yes, ma'am.
And even though I understand this is not a sightly site at this moment, it's not going to look any better if all they... going to look any better if all they have to look at is a row of buildings and garage doors. So...
Absolutely. As far as setbacks from the road, the first driveway will be in front of where the current building is now. So, until the actual storage building, the first building, it's going to be about 75 feet from the road. The plan is to go along where there's the culvert, going down the long, the side of 601, and take some dirt from the top of the property, do a little bit of mounding and some shrubbery, depending on how high it needs to be. And I also told Mr. Blair I'd be happy to give him some dirt for across the road if he wants some mounds as well. But yes, there is plans in place. Some of the setbacks in buffering, we won't know exactly until we really get into the permits and the grading and leveling and some of those requirements.
Will it be fenced?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. It will be fenced. I'm working with Matt Maurer with Betco. Matt Maurer lives here locally. He's kind of taking the reins on helping me get this designed. Some of this material is coming from him. Very high-end finishes, nice building. We're looking at neutral colors, so it's a little bit more of a rural setting. We don't need anything obnoxious. So, yes, there, one of the objections brought up at the planning meeting was lighting, of how that could actually be a nuisance. So, we're only doing directional lighting, which you can see in some of those photos. They're on the side of the storage units. So, there will be no floods, no major lights. One of the concerns with Mrs. Driver, which is diagonal across from the property, you can kind of see her house in the top corner of that photo. One of her concerns was out in this area, do people need storage? You know, tend to put a shed in the backyard or put their stuff in the, you know, on their property? And honestly, the goal is to potentially help that. Mr. Albright had some great points. You know, he moved out of the city to Davie County to be a little bit more rural. He owns some land up there, several acres. One of his concerns was Dollar General's trash truck coming at 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning and making noise. Was this going to be another noise issue? Garage doors opening and shutting and things like that? What I would say to that is, I know the quality material we're using as far, and as far as the traffic that's already traveling down 601 at 55, 60 miles an hour, there's not going to be any noise equivalent to some of those things. So, I think we've got noise addressed, buffer zones. I'm happy to do whatever makes the neighbors or you guys happy. The plan now is to use the natural buffering, which you can't see Mr. Albright's property from the subject property right now when you're standing there. You can't see Dollar General. You can't see 801. Those trees are very mature. So, really, the only thing to address is the roadside, and I think the best solution is bring some dirt from the top of the property that's going to have to be brought down anyways, create some mounds, pretty shrubbery.
And fencing?
Of course. Yes, sir. We're, there's a system or a company called NOKI, N-O-K-I, and that's, we're aiming to do a completely automated facility, so you can basically access everything from your phone electronically, and it'll be set up properly.
What kind of fence, what is the look of the fence as far as the, is it solid, chain link? What is it?
Right now, we've just thought eight-foot chain link fence. Black.
And how many units are you planning on putting in there?
Unfortunately, what you're seeing on your page there with that one unit that shows right against the road, that's not going to be there because of the setbacks and whatnot. So, we're aiming, we're shooting for 200. The site plan you see there pushes over 200. Originally, we were thinking 150. So, I think the magic number is going to be about 2. And I wish I had those exact numbers, but until we, until we do some of the permitting and requirements, I want...
So, you're saying this row here would not be there?
Yes, ma'am. That is actually going to be a driveway. So, when you come into the property with a gate, which will be on the south side of the property, you'll come in, there'll be rows. Your first unit will start about 75 feet from the road. So, really, the first unit is going to be about exactly where the existing structure is now.
What will be the perimeter, basically, of your, am I like that whole, you're not really doing that entire area in storage units, right?
We won't be able to because of the setbacks and whatnot. But, I mean, the goal is to lay it out pretty spaciously, plenty of room for maneuvering. And the goal is not to pack it in like sardines here. It's just really to do a nice facility. I grew up on a farm down Yacken Valley Road in Davie. I've passed this for the last 27 years, and, you know, I just, I think it'd be awesome to own something in Davie, have an investment, do something out in the area. I've been working with Mr. Schoeff, who's the listing agent on the property. He's been a great help. I've worked with all the local storage unit facility owners from Yadkinville, Advance to Moxville. They all love the idea. They've kind of helped me with some of the processing. Unfortunately, the fine print details, I really can't provide until we do all the topography maps and engineering and site surveys and soil samples and address the environmental concerns.
One final thing about the fencing is, was it ever brought up or any consideration to at least put, like, the mesh type, I don't know if that's the right, but it's like a curtain-type thing that, you know, fits on them like you'd see on outfield fences that does create some obscurity for the view, at least on the front side, that kind of thing?
Absolutely. And that's been a thought, but to be honest, really, one of the main goals for this facility with some of those pictures, the desert stone and the dark till coloring, is really just to not have an obnoxious facility. Have something that, and I know this is a little bit more of a rural property. We don't need, you know, Davie County orange and, as much as I love it, but I want something that's neutral. I mean, we're out, it is a little bit more in the country, even though it is at the intersection of two, you know, well-traveled highways. So, to answer your question, I'm all for it if it's needed, but I really think with kind of the colors that we're planning, the fencing, the mounds and the shrubbery, I don't really, I don't think there's going to be too much to cover up. It'll kind of blend in well.
And, George, just for folks' information here, what's the size of the property?
We have everywhere from 10 by 10 to 10 by 30.
And the size of the lot?
2.65 acres.
And what percentage of the lot will be housed in units?
Maybe 70%.
70%.
We're looking at about 30,000 square feet of space.
I have a question for Mr. Easter, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
What specifically does our ordinance call for along the highway as far as buffering?
It doesn't address buffering along highways and roadways. It does between uses. So, if you kind of look from intended uses, it spells it out from different zoning restrictions. So, from residential to commercial, it addresses what type of requirement buffering to add if needed, since there's already existing buffering there. In essence, he wouldn't have to add a whole lot supplemental, the fencing requirement, and if he does a berm around most storage facilities. But as regards to any kind of buffering on the front of the property, that's not, that's not mandated.
And for the other gentleman there, what would be the height of the berms in the front and the shrubbery? What do you anticipate?
Really, as from the beginning of speaking with Mr. Easter, I was okay with going into this with any contingencies that really neighbors or planning board or commissioners wanted. I'm not well-versed in exactly heights, setbacks, buffering, some of those, that terminology is a little bit new to me. But to answer your question, really, whatever's needed. Nothing crazy, you know? I wouldn't imagine a huge wall completely blocking the facility, but something like out in Advance, some of those neighborhoods, like in Oak Valley or like a Bermuda Run, how you just kind of have some hilly, you know, stuff going along the front with, you know, six-foot, eight-foot, you know, trees, shrubbery, things like that.
I guess to follow up on Richard's question just a little bit, is that, I hear what you want to do or what you're willing to do, is that indicated in the conditions?
Not currently. No. The only, the only condition that has been agreed to is the intended use. So, that would be the specific use. So, the highway business has a substantial bunch of uses that is defined with this. Since the applicant has narrowed, that's the only use that would be used on this property is for the warehousing self-storage.
So, the, so the planning board did not indicate specific conditions that Richard's kind of asking questions in Brenton, Benita. So, if that, if we want those, if you guys have that in mind, then we would have to specifically address those conditions in the motion tonight.
Correct. And both parties would have to agree.
I was about to say, since the conditional, you'd also, the applicant has to agree to those too.
Correct.
Under the state statute.
Then the commissioners could present their conditions and then have that discussion.
Correct, correct, correct. Yes, sir.
All right. I don't believe we've gotten to the public hearing yet, have we? All right. Any other questions?
No, but I do have a comment. I do like the berms that are in Oak Valley and places like that, which are about six feet tall. And if you put a two-foot shrubbery or three-foot shrubbery on top of that, there's no way you can be offended by what you're looking at from the highway.
Okay. When we get to the motion, then, Richard, we'll, okay. All right. I think that's a good, very good idea. Anything else for Mr. Easter, Mr. Budd? Okay? All right. Mr. Vogler?
One thing, I would like to say, if we do address conditions, we just ask that we need to be able to quantify them, we need to be able to measure them, you know, not any kind of ambiguous, you know, we can be able to say x, y, h, so that way we can measure them. If there's any, any future, we say unsightly. What does unsightly mean? Just if we can get them, we can quantify them and measure them through the inspection with conditions.
Was what Richard just said specific enough?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Mr. Vogler?
Chair has announced today that this is the day and hour of the public hearing pursuant to Chapter 160D of the General Statutes of North Carolina, also Chapter 155 of the Davie County Code of Ordinance for an Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance Regarding Davie County Tax Parcel C30008 Located at 4748 U.S. Highway 601 North Consistent of Approximately 2.65 Acres From Residential 20 to Highway Business Conditionals. There's been due notice given pursuant to the requirements of North Carolina General Statutes and also pursuant to the North Carolina Davie County Code of Ordinance by way of de-publication of notice of the public hearing in a newspaper, general circulation in Davie County. The clerk has attached an affidavit showing that publication with your minutes. I would ask all who wish to comment at this public hearing to come forward to the podium, state your full name for the board, and then comment on the proposal.
Mrs. Finney, gentlemen. I'm Brandy Coons. As you know, I'm practicing attorney here in town. I'm also a real estate agent. I've worked with Mr. Schoeff on many different projects over the years. As a resident here and as a business owner here, I would say that you really need to strongly consider approving this man's request. There is no valid or viable reason not to. There is nothing out in this area that fulfills the need that this man's project would, would meet. There's storage that's needed in that area for those residents, much like other parts of this county. People in other parts of the county would probably fill his facility within a matter of days of having it open. I just don't think that, you know, he should be subject to having any further restrictions placed on him beyond what is expected of other people with like facilities, just as long as it's obtainable for him to do so. He should be permitted to have this zoning change so that this project can move forward. The community needs it. Just do not discount how valuable this project would be. I mean, the people need it. It's a great use of this site. I've driven by it more times than I can count, going to Cortney, Yacken County. There is nothing there but a dilapidated, uninhabitable building that no one is going to buy and use for that purpose. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Corey Albright. I live in the property next door to this property. It's been an eyesore probably the past 20 years that I've been there, but I don't see any need to replace one eyesore with another eyesore. If we're being honest, storage place is just a place for junk. You just have junk in different buildings. I looked it up. We have 13 storage facilities in Davison County. 13. If I leave out of my house, make a left, a right, or if I go up 801, going to run into a storage facility within five minutes, Farmington, Yadkinville, and right here at Walmart. I don't see any need to have a 24-hour storage facility. Like I said, we all have storage buildings. No one needs it. No one is being hired, so there's no jobs being created. Things that I do know about the property, I'm in real estate, so I follow money. Property is worth $61,000. It's been non-conforming for 20, 30 years now. If you knock the buildings down, it's probably going to be worth $41,000. 2.6 acres commercial in Davie County is over $600,000. So, I don't know how it could go from 41 to 600,000. That might be good for Mr. Budd. That might be good for the real estate agent. Might be good for the owner. I know Ms. Dot. I love Ms. Dot to death. She's a great person, but I don't want to give up my privacy, my comfort, my peace, just so Ms. Dot can make a couple of dollars. Like I said, it's been quiet out there forever. I got about 100 animals coming in my yard I be feeding, and I don't, I like my peace and my quiet, and I like to keep it like that. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Sue Driver. I've lived in the area almost over 40 years now, and I can know why Dot had to do it. I know why everybody has to do it, but I'm just concerned about, like Dollar General, it closes. It closes. But this is going to be around the clock where people can come and go whenever they want to. And that's what worries me, the coming and going whenever they want to. See, Dollar General did suit a purpose in that area, and we needed it. I mean, there was nothing, you know, closed. And, but, just the 24 hours open, people coming and going, you know, whenever. That's what, I just, you know, I have a problem with that, you know? And I know 601 is very busy. I mean, it's a constant thing, but just a facility where it's open around the clock, I've never seen one in a, really, in a community like ours, open around the clock. I, because Dollar General's not. I don't know any, because Walmart even not open around the clock anymore. So, just think about that. That's the only thing. I just don't, you know, of course, I hate to see, you know, like he's talking about the animals and everything else, you know, change, but I know change will come no matter what. But I'm just worried about the round-the-clock open, you know, where people can come and go whenever. And I really, about the need, I don't know about the need. I really, I mean, people might have stuff, they just got to have somewhere to go. I don't know. But, like he said, though, there's millions, I mean, they're everywhere. They're everywhere anyway, very close to where we live already. And, but I'm just concerned about the round-the-clock open thing. Thank you.
Hello. Aaron Schoeff, I represent Dot Westmoreland, the owner of the property. You probably know this property before was a service station. It's non-conforming. Then it was changed into an apartment building, so its use has been of a commercial nature. Intersections like that, over time, grow and turn commercial, and that one will too, and it will continue to do so as time progresses. But what he's trying to put there is about as low as impact as you could hope to have. Well, we could be here talking about a sheet, because I certainly tried to sell the property to sheets. So, you know, I understand the concerns of the neighbors, and I always hate that, but at the end of the day, the bottom line is, just like the planning board said, this property checks all the boxes. It meets all the criteria to be zoned commercial, so Dot Westmoreland should have the expectation that it would be. And I don't think that he should be subject to any, you know, anything out of the ordinary than these other facilities. There's one on 158 halfway to Advance, really nice, clean facility. It's not, you know, it's not required to have any kind of different buffering. I think if you, when he goes through the planning and permitting section, they'll explain to him what he has to do for any kind of buffering. So, I think that there's, there's not any reason not to zone this commercial. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Chair, seeing no one else coming forward to comment, I'd turn the public hearing back over to the board chair to close the public comments section of this public hearing, provide the board with the opportunity to discuss among yourselves what, if any, action you wish to take with regards to this matter.
Okay. We have a motion to close the public comment.
So moved.
Ms. Finney, second. Richard, Mr. Poindexter, all in favor? Okay. All right. Now, we're open to discussion. Any, anything that you all have, or a motion to approve?
And before you actually make the motion, you probably need to discuss... And before you actually make the motion, you probably need to discuss what, if any, conditions you want to discuss with the applicant and make certain that he agrees to those conditions before you make a motion.
I believe we'll do that. Floor's open.
I'm not going to suggest any conditions right off the bat, but I have had lots of people call me about having so many of these popping up. And while they serve a need, and while they're, you know, they're not disruptive in the sense that a sheet would be or something. I think it's just something, you know, what is going to dictate where one's appropriate and where one's not appropriate. We've been approached about selling land at our church, across from our church, maybe for one of these. So they seem to be kind of in play anywhere there's a halfway major road. So I just, you know, I'm just concerned about these just multiplying and multiplying. And that's, you know, that may not address the conditions, but it's, at some point, I think we need to look at the issue or the magnitude or the amount of these that we're willing to have in our county.
I'm not ready to put forth any conditions, but I have to have a question. Given the technology that will be controlling access to this, is there a way to, and I know this isn't the norm, but just a question, to limit the access, to Ms. Driver's question, from say, deny access from, say, midnight to 6:00?
I looked into that after the last planning and zoning meeting, and with the software, no key, set time restriction. You can do as you wish with blocking the facility, or if you lock somebody's facility, unlock it.
Okay. Is that something, you've looked into it. Is that something you would consider? Or would you need some time to think about that?
It's something I would surely consider if the difference needed. I would happily consider it. And, you know, again, kind of moving into this whole process, there's a lot of things that I just kind of put into the hands of people that know more than I know, and to kind of show me how I need to do it. To be honest with you, I don't think storage facilities, I've spent time over the last few months, you know, at some of these other storage facilities meeting with the storage owners. And there's really not a ton of traffic, you know, somebody, and the unfortunate problem, you know, to Ms. Driver's comment is, you have everybody's stores there junked, and then they don't want to remove it. So it tends to sit. And there are facilities popping up. But, you know, I think that, I think that there wouldn't be enough traffic to need something like that, like need to shut it off at a certain time. But if they're working issues or at least they're addressed on time,
Are you going to allow any outside vehicles, campers, boats, or is everything going to be contained in the building?
Contained in the buildings. The security is contained. We're not going to have public facilities. It's going to be a very straight-up automated restroom, so.
We just got a text from IT indicating that your comments are not being picked up. Could you go back up to the mic to address that? Thank you.
So yes, we, we, we're just planning on units, just the units. We'd like to address the setbacks, the buffering, you know, all the, all the things that need to be appropriately done, and put as many units as fit, you know, appropriately. 25 feet between each building. There's not going to be a lot of extra space to do any type of parking. It's not a huge lot. It's a pretty small lot, which is why I think other facility owners haven't done anything with it, because obviously, as far as the numbers go, it's not a grand slam for, you know, some of these facilities that have thousands of, of units. And from Yakonville to Advance to Moxville, everybody's over 90% occupancy, most, just as an average. But actually, most facilities are, especially in Moxville, 100% full.
And did he need to repeat what he indicated to Terry on the?
I would repeat that, yes.
Your thoughts on the issue of restricting time act?
On the hours?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. The service no key that we're wanting to use for all the keyless entry, there will be a physical lock inside the unit that the client can use if they would like. But you can restrict times. You can lock somebody out if they've not paid. You can unlock somebody remotely. You can let somebody in the gate remotely. There is surely the capability of being able to cut off. And it might just be something that's in the material, you know? We're here from 7:00 a.m. to, you know, 11:00 p.m., or whatever, whatever it may be. I haven't really thought that through, because I didn't think it was necessary. I just, I honestly imagine with the amount, the lower amount of units compared to other facilities, I kind of imagining it filling up, and of course, there will be a turnover rate. But I do not see it being tremendous. So I don't really think there will be a lot of in-and-out traffic, especially with not having, you know, RVs and boats and all sorts of stuff parked on the lot.
Just one more quick question in terms of your vision of the, of the business. Are you going to have day-to-day management out there, Jordan? I mean, I know it's, I know it's self-serve, basically, if that's the term you would use. But are you going to have, are you going to have management on-site that would maintain security during the day, the cleanliness of the site, that kind of thing?
Absolutely. I've actually talked to a couple of guys local that live off 601. One gentleman lives down Jack Bo, or Jack.
Jack Boo.
Jack Road nearby. And he has been willing to be the guy that's kind of the go-to. If somebody moves out of a facility, he'll come in, sweep it out, make sure everything's addressed and taken care of. As far as on-site, you know, like a salaried employee or somebody there, you know, all the time, that's not the goal here. The goal here is to have, you know, very up-to-speed technology, the no-key services, the security systems, and kind of minimize, you know, the need for an office there, a restroom there, you know, labor. But yes, there will be somebody locally that checks on the facility frequently, but it's not going to be full-time.
Is that the same person that would be on-call if there were hour restrictions on it, and somebody had an emergency in the middle of the night and needed to get in, that they could call and?
It would be, yes. And their, their units and the gate could be, you know, unlocked remotely. Yes, so that would be kind of the, the go-to guy to keep an eye on everything. He lives, you know, maybe, maybe a mile down the road, passes it every day, going to and from work and, and, yeah. Be good eyes on the property.
Other questions or comments?
He goes to and from work. You sure he's going to want to answer the phone in the middle of the night?
We'll find out. We'll find the right person. And I'll, you know, obviously be very involved. But, yeah, it's a new, new thing for me, so we're going to have to create it and build it, and, you know, figure it out as we go along and make sure we, at least, my main thing is, from the very, from the get-go of this process with Mr. Schuff and kind of going back and forth with Dorothy, and then just, you know, ultimately come into an agreement on, on price. My main thing was just to bring in people that are already in the, in the field, and local surveyor, local storage unit facility owner. I'm not going to be subcontracting everything out. Basically, Betco, Matt Maurer out of Moxville is going to facilitate everything. So as far as fencing, security, the concrete, the asphalt, the, everything, you know, is, is being overseen by a professional that builds them nationwide.
Very good. Anything else? Okay, if we're, thank you. We really appreciate you being patient. I would ask Mr. Easter, just in general, not in specifics to Mr. Budd's property. Mr. Schuff brings up a concern, and I think this is kind of something we had to, we've kind of had to address through the planning board with solar farms and things of that nature. At what, at what point in what do you need from the commissioners in terms of thoughts about where we are in terms of storage facilities in Davy County? I mean?
From that standpoint about putting a moratorium or looking to study, I, I don't know. It, it's kind of a, driven by the economy, who wants it and who doesn't want it. You know, do we have enough or not enough? People are willing to invest. I have conversations with people about this all the time, about building, who are current owners, who are currently looking to expand. You know, they can't, if they had 1,000 more units, they could rent 1,000 more. So I think that's just, it just ebbs and flows. So I don't, as a standpoint, have, I have multiple conversations about people about warehousing in many stores.
Yeah. And I guess there's thoughts, and I don't, I'm not putting words in Mr. Schuff's mouth, about how far out in rural Davy County do we move with these types of facilities, that kind of thing. Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that was going to be one of my comments. We know we have a lot of storage facilities in the county already. Most of them are near town or in town, either Bermuda Run or Bermuda Run's ETJ, or Moxville, or, or Advance even. And while I, I see them there, they're more in a commercial setting, where you have other buildings and you don't have berms, you don't have buffers. Out in the country like this is a little bit different. And that's something I'd like to see Mr. Easter and maybe the planning board visit sometime. As to when you're out in a rural setting like this, you don't need buildings exposed like this. You, you need to buffer them a little bit more in keeping with the rural nature there. Also, I would like to see some hours, restriction of hours put on this if we decide to approve it.
Well, if, if there, if there is a motion, I would think you would need to indicate those conditions. And, because Mr. Easter said he needs specifics if we're going to place conditions on Mr. Budd, and of course, have discussions with Mr. Budd about those. So, but, but we are open.
Let me ask this question. Can it be deferred in a sense that, you know, I don't know that we're going to hammer out a good solution with a couple of motions here tonight that's going to make everybody happy. This is not like a thumbs up, thumbs down vote. But I'm a little bit concerned about what we can come up with in a meeting to say we've really, have we explored every option that we think we might want? I'm asking.
So you have three options. You can either deny, you can defer to either the next meeting or the following meeting, whichever, or you can approve. If you have a motion to approve, you need to have those conditions set out before you make that motion to approve, have that discussion with Mr. Budd, and have an agreement. And it needs, really needs to be a signed agreement indicating what those conditions are. And spell them out well enough that the planning department then can enforce those conditions. You know, so, you know, if you're looking at, at an approval with conditions, then you might want to defer and set up those conditions, establish those conditions of what this board wants, and then discuss that with Mr. Budd and have that reduced to writing.
And I, and I appreciate concerns here, but, you know, this, the packet has been before us. And so I think it could be respectful to Mr. Budd if you, if there's potential to vote in a certain way, perhaps negative, that if there are conditions you want him to, to discuss with him, that we come up with those conditions and possibly defer, or we approve with whatever your conditions are. I don't think we need to just keep putting this off, because the planning board addressed it. But certainly, if this board wishes conditions, Mr. Budd has indicated he's open to discuss the conditions. But he can't discuss what he doesn't know. So. Hours such.
I think deferring it makes sense and ask Mr. Easter to talk to Mr. Budd about some restrictions, because we're asking him to commit to something monetarily. He doesn't know what it is. I support this project to, it is low impact, and I, you know, I assume the market will absorb it. But it is low impact as far as the use. But we're asking this man to commit to something that we can't quantify. And he, so I don't think it's fair. So I would, I would make the motion to defer it to next month. But we do owe him an answer next month.
Okay, we have a motion to defer. Have a second?
Can we make that motion and give him some idea what we're looking for, so he knows where to go from here?
Certainly I do it. Well, I think, I think one of the issues that has been brought up is the hours. You know, Richard or Terry, if there are specifics here, then we get them to Mr. Easter. If we're going to defer, I think within, within just a few days, we should be in contact with Mr. Easter or Mr. Barnett, so he can communicate with Mr. Budd what, what you guys, what your thinking here is, so we can have that discussion. We don't just need to lay this thing and let it linger on out there, because we do need to address it at, at the July meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would want to see a buffer on that property, some combination of soil and vegetation to block the view from the highway as much as you possibly can. I know you can't totally, because you have the driveways going in and out, and, and the hours of operation. I've always said nothing good happens after midnight. And my parents said the same thing, too, about us, and they had four boys, so. Anyway, from maybe 12:00 o'clock at night to 6:00 o'clock in the morning, that way, somebody going to work could go by there on the way to work and still be at work by 8:00 o'clock wherever they work. But I agree, this is probably something that is needed in that section of the county, because I don't know of anything close by. So I'm going to ask.
Stacy, you got those?
I'm going to ask for the vegetation.
Stacy's got them, of course.
And the buffer, and the hours.
Okay.
The only other question I'd have is, there looks like, just at a glance, there's sufficient buffer for the property to the north, but, you know, from that, I can't, I go by there a lot, but I can't tell is that just how sufficient that is, how sufficient that is? Or does the owner to the north, if it is to be approved, right, does, do you feel like that's sufficient?
Right now, I probably can't see everything, but I can just see a park. Sir, can you either speak up or come up to the podium where we could get that recorded? Thank you.
All the trees, that's all my property. It, right now, is filled in. You know, it's summertime. But soon as summer is over, all that stuff falls apart, and I can see everything across there. Somebody could just walk through the little woods and be in my property in two minutes. That's one thing I'm concerned about. If I get up at 2:00 o'clock in the morning, decide I want to go to Food Line and Yakonville, I don't want to get to the bottom of my driveway and somebody's sitting down there, you know, anything. Can I go, or any questions?
I'm just.
You can go.
Yeah. I'm just would suggest then we consider a buffer adjustment on that side.
Are, are you indicating what Mr. Poindexter's indicating on the front side? He needs specifics.
I'm not an engineer, so I don't know what we should put there, but I think some kind of buffer. Because if we don't start addressing these issues, we're just going to see these continue to pop up everywhere. And that, so, you know, if this is what we've got to do, is draw a line in the sand and make these more presentable and more costly, maybe that's something that needs to be considered. I'm not against it conceptually. But, you know, you're going into an area, it'd been not, nice for two lots, to build two houses there. That could have been considered too. So I just think this all needs to be on the table.
You okay with that? You got that, Mr. Easter? Okay. All right. Anything else?
And just to make sure, according to our ordinances, that you consult with the fire marshal and the fire chief of that district on anything that needs to be done there regarding hydrants and fire suppression.
That's all a part of the permitting process, yep.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion to defer, and we have specifics to go back to Mr. Bud. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second for Mr. Poindexter. All in favor of deferring to our July meeting?
10th.
Okay, our July meeting. Excuse me, please?
Open comment, is it closed? Do we need to address and put a notice in the paper again for the meeting? Is open comment closed? Public comment, I'm sorry.
Not yet, but as soon as I get through reading the rest of what I need to read, how soon it's going to be closed?
Okay, okay, making sure.
Anyone else wish to speak, come forward.
We closed public comment.
Did we close, did we close? We have closed it? Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, motion to defer and a second, and Mr. Easter has the specifics to talk to Mr. Bud. All in favor? All right. We will address this in July.
And then to answer your question, you will not need to republish that.
All right, next, 2324 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the board. As manager, one of the main duties of me is to present to you the budget for the upcoming fiscal year, and tonight, I'd like to recommend, I'd like to present to you my recommended budget for fiscal year '23 and '24. I'm also going to touch base on the '24 through '28 capital improvement plan as well. At a high level view, the recommended budget for '23, '24, when you put all of the county's funds together, we're sitting at $105,660,125. Of that, $80,963,605 represents the general fund. In a lot of ways, the '23, '24 recommended budget is very similar to the current year budget, well, the current year approved budget. We are looking to maintain the existing tax rate of .773, and what's the, the glaring big difference in this year's budget compared to prior year budgets is the establishment of a countywide fire fund. This is an operating fund for us to be able to segregate out our fire, this is our fire, volunteer fire department funding, separate from the general fund where it has been for multiple years, and that's a big reason why, when you look at the overall countywide budget, it's at $105 million, because actually we are transferring money from the general fund to the fire fund this upcoming fiscal year. And then with this budget, we are looking to balance the budget with appropriation of $2,336,001 of our fund balance to budget, to balance the budget. This is a list of our overall funds, our operating funds. As you can see, the general fund at $80,963. We have the Advance Rural Fire Protection Fund, the new countywide fire fund, our environmental protection fund. This is the fund that we use to, for our solid waste. Our second biggest fund and most looked at is our public utilities fund, and we're looking at $8,796,496. We have our 911 fund, our Corona's Fires Relief Fund, and our employee health fund. And all, this is, I believe, the first year we've hit over $100 million, so this is, this is how we've come to the $105,660,125. A revenue standpoint, we will continue, just like all counties in North Carolina, property taxes are our largest source of revenue. Sales tax is coming in strong at $13 million. Our intergovernmental at $8 million. Our charges for services at $7 million. We do have some miscellaneous, and these are, most of our miscellaneous revenues are those that we don't have a particular large area to put the funds, so we're looking at 2.2 million. Our interest earnings are starting to come back up at a half a million. We are going to balance the budget using 4.7 of our American Rescue Plan money, and then, again, our appropriated fund balance is sitting at 2.3 million. These funds, even though on the previous slide was at $105 million, these are just the revenues that go into our general fund, and this is primarily the main fund that most people are concerned about and pay attention to when it comes to local government. This is just a graphical representation. As you can see, again, property taxes are our largest source of revenue. When you look at our focus areas, here in Davie County, one thing that we do fairly well compared to other counties is that we actually approve our budget within our focus areas instead of one individual department. If you, I'm going to jump down to the bottom, as you can see, as I stated earlier, the '23, '24 budget is not much different than '22, '23. In the grand total on the general fund, we are only looking at about $650,000 increase from the current year approved budget. Most of that, if you actually, if you go back and look across the different focus areas, in business operations, you will see a drop there from 5.1 million to 3.9. That is where last year we took some of our American Rescue Plan money, and from an original budget standpoint, we budgeted most of those expenses in our administrative departments, and then we spread that, we spread that money out throughout the fiscal year to our different departments. So it looks like that's a major drop in business operations, but that's more of an accounting operation than any real reduction in service. Our safe and healthy community, looks like that took a drop, but again, with the creation of our fire, fire, countywide fire fund, the reason why you see that 34.9 million compared to 34.0 million is because we're actually, we're going to, we're going to transfer that money from the general fund to the fire fund, so that's why you see the contributions to other funds on our second to last line jump from 3.1 million to 5.8 million. A significant portion of that is due to that. With all counties, as you can see, we are looking to increase our funding for education from 17.0 to 17.6 million. Here's a graphical representation of all of our funds in the general fund. Just want to point out, there's only three pie charts in the presentation, so we, but this first one, this shows, and I, and I would, I would dare to say that you all would agree, one of your largest priorities is the safety of the community, so it makes sense for the largest portion of our general fund at 42.11% to go towards safe and healthy community focused area. This is going to be a major part of our public safety funding. And then our second area of large spending for the next fiscal year is education at 21.75%. Within education, which is at 17.6 million, 94% of that is allocated for Davie County schools, with nearly 5% going to Davie Community College, a portion for Ignite Davie, and then almost a percent of our overall education funding for our JCPC. On the utility side, as you can see, we have fairly a good mixture at 8.7, almost $8.8 million, with a large portion of that going to our water treatment plants at almost 28%, and our water operations at 20%. A quick snapshot of our capital improvement plan, and I'm going to go into this a little bit more detail later on in the presentation, but 1.1 million for Davie Community College, $300,000 for the detention center. These are our basic detention center upgrades and needs. We are looking at starting Phase One of some additional work at the courthouse for $360,000, and then at the community park, we are looking to do a major HVAC project. On the utility side, and again, our utility money and our general fund money, totally separate, but on the utility side, we are looking at water and sewer extensions on Main Church Road, Yakon Valley Road, and in Kool-Aimie. We are looking to repair and replace piping and pumps and valves at our pump stations, and our third project is to renovate the Dedman Road pump station. From an employee standpoint, the recommended budget for all eligible employees, we're looking at a 3% overall increase. 1% of that will be COLA, which we will enact on the first day of the fiscal year, well, July 2nd is the first, first, first pay period day of the fiscal year. And then for all of our eligible employees who meet their performance appraisal requirements, they can receive up to an additional 2% merit increase. Since about 2008, the North Carolina retirement system has steadily increased the portion that local governments have to pay into the system, so we're looking at $172,963 towards that increase, and we do not, we are not passing any of that on to the employee. Also on the employee side, we did have an increase of 8.4% for our health insurance plan, which is roughly $360,000. For all employees who are, who continue or who have opted into the employee-only part of our insurance program, they will not see any type of increase in their, for insurance premiums. We are going to continue our $50 per month for noncompliance with our HRA. As we, as we have witnessed on the health insurance side, the healthier our employees are, the better the county comes out financially, so we want to incentivize our employees to be as healthy as possible. And we also going to continue our wellness incentive, so all of our employees who meet within their acceptable ranges for their HRA will continue to receive their monthly bonuses for being healthy. We are looking at three new positions. The first two are income maintenance and DSS. These, both of these positions are offset by a 75% reimbursement. Both of these positions that we are looking to recommend are due for the recently passed Medicaid expansion by the General Assembly. And then we are looking at adding one water quality technician in public utilities. We are about to be hit with some major requirements on the utility side for compliance, and we think it's a bigger job than what we're currently asking our water plant employees to do, so this one person would be responsible for that. So this is a chart of our fund balance history. We're the light blue color, as you can see, when we compare ourselves statewide and to our population group, as other parts of the state continue to go up in fund balance. We, we were in a very unique situation last year, last fiscal year, where we added money to fund balance, but we also, but we witnessed a decrease in our percentage of fund balance due to the calculation that our outside auditing firm uses. So even though we put money in the bank, our percentage went down because as our, as our expenses increased, that number is used as the denominator in determining your fund balance. This is below our, if you see there in purple, our policy, but it is still well above the recommended amount that the, that the local government commission recommends for local governments in North Carolina. This is something that we will continue to monitor next fiscal year, and we would like to be in a situation next year where we see that blue line coming back up. I don't, I do not anticipate it meeting the policy of 25%, that type of jump in one year, but I do think that we can start our path to get us back in the upward trajectory. On the utility side, if you look at FY '24, we are looking at a slight increase in our rates, but it's still well below the state averages. States, the state average is between 4 and 6%. Considering the fact that we just kicked off our new water plant in the Kool-Aimie, that's a $50 million project, but there were some expectations that rates would have to increase. We are very optimistic that the, what we're seeing from a historical standpoint on our revenue, we will not have to see such an increase next year in FY '25, even with the project being underway. So some noteworthy items within this budget, with, if we do approve the three new positions, we will be at 408 full-time employees. We have 147 part-time equivalents. We will continue our inter-local agreements that we have with Moxwell, Bermuda Run, and Kool-Aimie. Just like tonight where we extended some incentives, we will continue the incentives that we have in place, and we will continue to look for those economic opportunities through economic development. In recreation, we will continue the contribution for the Lake Louise Maintenance Project and the outside funding that we give the nonprofits through our Rec Advisory Board. In EMS, we have quite a bit of capital for lifesaving equipment. We've had some equipment that has aged out, and this budget will allow us for new equipment. The sheriff's office, we are looking at a crime scene scanner. We are looking to increase the funding for our volunteer fire departments. And some of our capital outlay, we are looking at a new roof on Wilkes-Barre Street Building where we have cooperative extension sold in water and fire marshal, emergency management. The, two of those positions that I just mentioned are for Medicaid expansion, and this budget fully funds the opening of EMS Station 4 this fall. On the capital improvement side, this budget continues the 6.3 cent property tax for the funding that was set aside for the debt funding that began in 2015, and it also sets aside the 10.8 cent that was used in construction for the 2015 bond for the Davie High School. We did set aside $300,000 from our restricted sales tax for the school system, and we are also going to contribute, well, the school contributes an additional $200,000 for capital each year. From a debt payout policy standpoint, our policy is 55% of our debt will be paid out within a 10-year period. This up to 2420, to 2428 CIP keeps us right in track with our policy. From an assessed debt ratio standpoint, the rule of thumb is that you want 2% of your assessed debt equal to your, I mean, 2%, 2.5% of your assessed value is, is the benchmark, and you want to be underneath that amount when you look at your existing and proposed debt. If you just look at the existing debt in dark green, we're well above that as we move forward over the next few years, and even with the proposed debt outside of FY '25, we would be looking at a 1.5. We would still be well below the benchmark of 2.5% of our assessed value equal to our debt. From a debt to expenditure standpoint, our goal is to be below 15% of our overall expenditures is occupied by debt. If we were to enact the proposed debt fully, you would be looking at FY '26 being slightly above that around 16%, but in FY '27, the proposed debt would put us below the 15% mark. Just looking at our existing debt again in dark green, we'll well below the 15% threshold that we've set for ourselves. From a capital improvement funding standpoint, if you look at, this is over the five-year period, I'm going to primarily focus on FY '24. This is the 1.8 million that I referenced earlier for Davidson Community College to assist in the construction of facility on the Davie campus here. At the detention center, the $300,000 is for dehumidifier. The courthouse, Phase One, this would just be the design portion. If we were to, obviously, there's, this is not a, if we, if we fund the design this year, are we on the hook next year? Not necessarily, but we would have the design out away for the first phase of the courthouse project. And then at the community park, the $350,000 for the HVAC system. Right now, we have, we have, we have two competing systems that at times can be a nightmare to keep the facility cool, so this would be an opportunity to us to rectify that situation. If you look out in future years, obviously, in 2025, we have two, we have a, we have a paving project. This particular one for $500,000, drawing a blank, this was the, I got it on my sheet real quick. This is at the community park, and then in FY '26, this would be the Dodge Building and its senior services. The detention center project, obviously, I think you all understand there is a need for that, but financially, right now, we have pushed that off for another year to have more discussions, to see if we can look for some outside funding so that we don't have to leverage all of that project via debt. The courthouse, the 3.7 million, again, is tied to the $360,000. And then with EMS Station 4 coming online this fall, I think the next big step for us to look towards. us to look towards is acquisition of land for EMS Station 5, somewhere in the northwest corner of the county. And then lastly, in 2028, we have set aside some money through the CIP. We will continue to look for land for the Ag Center. Personally, I hope that's not in 2028, but if an opportunity comes up, then we will bring that to your attention. Hopefully, that's something that we can move on sooner than later. This is just a financial breakdown of the capital improvement plan. You can see 3.1 million there is general fund, pay-as-you-go. We are looking to do a reimbursement in 2025, 2 million. We have received state funding for the courthouse project. And then we are looking at some additional debt financing of the 3.7 if we do move forward on the courthouse. And then with the detention center, that would probably be looking at a 20-year note on that particular facility. Again, this is for presentation's sake, this is pretty much everything. I just went over all in one slide. So at this point, after any discussion or questions from you, we are scheduled to have our public hearing. And then just due to some timing nature of some discussions that we've had internally, we have looked at the idea of having a special call meeting on Monday, June 19th to approve the budget. So at this point in time, do you have any questions?
Questions? I know there's been a lot of discussion, but any questions for Mr. Barnett?
I don't have a question, but of course, I have a comment. As you already know, I am very disappointed that we would consider absorbing the rest of these ARPA funds to balance this budget. Before you were here, the last time we absorbed some of it in, I told our staff I would like to see more creative ways for that money to be spent, as other counties have done. And it concerns me that we had to absorb that whole amount to balance our budget, because what are we going to do next year? We're not going to have that money. And, you know, at my house, if I don't have enough money, I have to do without something. So I think we need to do without a little bit more and get a little closer to the number and not be so far away.
Other questions or comments? Okay, all right. Public hearing, Mr. Vogel?
Chairman has announced this is the day and hour of a public hearing pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes and Local Government Budget Physical Control Act. This board is conducting a public hearing on proposed Davie County budget for the 2023-24 fiscal year and the 24 through 28 capital improvement plan. Due notice of this public hearing was advertised, remember, in the local newspaper, general circulation in the county, as required by law, as noted in the notice of public hearing included in your agenda packet. I'd ask all who wish to comment at this public hearing to come forward to the podium, state your full name for the board, and then comment on the proposals. Mr. Chair, seeing no one come forward, I would now turn the public hearing back over to you as board chair to close the public comment section of this public hearing, provide the board the opportunity to discuss among yourselves what, if any, action you wish to take with regards to this matter.
All right, I have a motion to close public comment. Mr. Born Dexter, do I have a second? Mr. Schoeff, any other questions or discussions in that regards? All in favor? Unanimous? Then I would assume Mr. Barnett has been in touch with everyone about the June 19th meeting. That would be at our normal meeting time of 6:00, right?
That would be up for you all to set that time.
Do I have, I know we've had that discussion, Mr. Barnett's had that discussion with each of you. Do I have a motion to move?
Is it, do we, can we?
I know Ed is not going to be there on the 19th. I'm not sure that's...
We can still have the meeting. We've talked.
Yeah, I don't think...
We discussed that.
Do I have a motion to establish the meeting and the time?
So moved.
June 19th at 6?
June 19th.
Okay, Ms. Finney, June 19th at 6. Mr. Born Dexter, second. Anything else? Okay, all in favor? Okay, all right. It's unanimous. Okay, now we go to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? And we'll field questions if there are questions on specifics on the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Renninger makes that motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Schoeff, seconds. Now, are there any questions about specifics on the consent agenda?
I just have a couple of questions. Robin can probably answer them, or Brian may be able to answer them, just mostly for public clarification as well. On some of these lease adjustments, we have some large numbers floating around there. The Government Center Building, the purchase services from the Sheriff's Office, can you give us any type of clarification of what that pertains to? Because those are large numbers.
They are very large numbers, and it all has to do with the Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 86 for leases. And it's basically the way we have to account for them now is different than we have in years past. That's the annual adjustment that we are required to make according to that statement. So that's the reason why it looks so large and strange.
Thank you, Robin.
You're welcome.
Did you have anything else for Nina? That was Ed. Okay, anybody else? Okay, we have a motion in second, all in favor of approval of the consent agenda. Any opposed? All right. Unanimous, okay. County manager's report?
The only report I've had is, I would ask Mr. Paul Moore to come up.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Just wanted to touch base. Had our first major concert event of 2023 held at the community park this past weekend. Great turnout. What I wanted to specifically do is tell you the organization that this county has is impeccable. And there are plenty of people that I'd love to thank tonight just for this one concert, which will happen throughout the rest of the series. First, Brad Blackwelder, General Services Director, he was our runner for this weekend. John Gallimore and Wendy Gallimore, his wife. Kelly and Roger Funderburke, Roger sits on my advisory board, Kelly with registered deeds. Cameron Webb and the Fire Marshal's team and staff created a command center that was quite impressive, that most people found comfort in seeing and knowing that our venue is safe and a pleasant place to come to. Our Davie County EMS, Davie County Sheriff's Department, which provide our law enforcement not only just for traffic, but for the bands, crowd control, Maxwell Fire Department, and lastly, our team. I can't tell you enough how many people that I spoke to Friday, Saturday, and even yesterday cleaning up the park at, starting at 7:30 in the morning. I had a lady come by that was walking that came out there and said, "I couldn't believe what I saw." It was just, the organization was impressive, and it's to be commended. If I could give each one of our volunteers, our interdepartmental staff, a JEMs award today, I would. I'd have so many to write, which I probably will do anyway. But just wanted to let you guys know that was a very successful turnout while we were cut short by a big thunderstorm. We have seen not one, not one negative comment on it. So I just wanted to brief you and say thank you to all those who helped us this weekend.
I think the rescue squad was there as well.
Yes.
And maybe a couple volunteer departments, weren't they, Cameron? A couple volunteer departments there, too. I do have a financial question regarding the rain.
Yes.
So because Sammy made it to the stage, I guess he won't do a rain date, he'll just get paid, right?
His sound and production and his sound guy, as well as his manager, reached out to me and would like to reschedule. What that entails is a good question, and we might take him up on that if they offer us a great deal, absolutely. Love to have him back. Thank you.
Anything else? Paul, when's the next one?
Next concert is July 1st with Embers, The Embers and Craig Woolard. So excited to look forward to that, and should be, that will be a fireworks show, so concert and fireworks with headliner and opener as well. And I would invite the public that throughout the day, much like this Saturday, being made, of course, going out to the splash pad, checking on chemicals, a lot of folks were making a day of it. And I talked to a lady that come out from Cary that spent the day, the splash pad, were staying at the Days Inn and coming to see Sammy Kershaw that night. So that's what we want to see. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Mr. Barnett or Paul, if you got them? All right. Any old business? Any new business? All right, let's go to commissioners' comments. Ms. Finney, I won't forget you this month.
Well, first of all, I want to say, Brian, I do thank you so much for this very large book of information that I've been asking for, for a long time. And I do appreciate that we got this notebook this year, even though I'm still going through it, and there's a lot going on. But I appreciate it, and all of the time that you have spent talking with us, which has been a lot, about this budget and all the questions that have answered. I have asked for a lot of information, some of it I'm actually still waiting for, but I've asked for a lot, and I've gotten most of it, so. And I do want to say something that I'm probably going to get scolded for, but I just want to tell the library supporters, writing ugly letters with incorrect information and slandering county commissioners is just not the way to have a productive discussion. We are people. We are people who try our best to do this job for very, very little money. We do it because we love our county. We do not have a political agenda. We are trying to make the best decision possible, and we do appoint board members. But slandering us in the newspaper, especially when the information's not even correct, and on Facebook and on our emails, that's not the way to accomplish anything. We all need to work together and be kind.
Thank you, Ms. Finney. Mr. Schoeff?
Well, going to take a little different direction on this. We've had fairly contentious discussions tonight, but what I want to say, a shout-out to one of our agencies that's kind of dear to my heart for different reasons, but recently had to deal with animal control. And it wasn't in such a positive way, but things worked out pretty well. But what I would say is that I'd like to commend Eric Straney, the officer, for his professionalism and his understanding and the courtesies that he extended to me. I also like to say positive comments about Lisa Nielsen, who is the director down there. I've talked with Lisa before, and I've taken my mom by there for different things. But what I would like to transition into is that a lot of people think that our shelter is just kind of a kill shelter. They get the stereotypical view. I'm not saying people sitting up here, but it's a really nice facility with 24 cat enclosures, 48 dog enclosures. The officers go out and look into animal cruelty, they look into aggressive and nuisance complaints, and they look into animal bites, rabies control, livestock in there. They've taken in some 368 dogs, 338 cats, along with other animals over the past, well, during 2022. They offer a great service for vaccines, for dogs and cats, for rabies for $5. And they have a food pantry that I've contributed to recently for Davie County residents for their pets. I say this because I'm asking people out there in YouTube land to volunteer. If you're 18 years old, go by, cuddle some dogs, cats, walk some. Consider very seriously adopting a shelter dog. I know everybody's not into dogs, but fortunately, y'all got to deal with me, I'm one that is into dogs. And I will tell you that during my adult life, I've suffered from anxiety, generalized anxiety disorder. And it kind of caveats off of mental illness and stuff that we do have brought to our attention in this meeting. And I can tell you that one of the dogs that we adopted at what was then the Humane Society Facility was a life changer for me. And I would just say, consider it. You see a lot of shirts out there that say, "Who Saved Who?" Well, I can tell you, my dogs that I have make me a better person. I know they do. And I'll leave you this one thing to people. I love Mark Twain. Not as well dead as I need to be, but I certainly love his dog quotes. You need to look up his dog quotes, because they're great. And this makes me think of what my daughter had when I lost my deer princes, that was the dog that we adopted there, and she got hit chasing a deer. But the thing that she put on that cup for me is one of my favorite Twain quotes. And people need to think about this, and maybe to get him one of these rescue dogs. "If you feed a starving dog and make him prosperous, he won't bite you. That is the principal difference between dog and man." Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Richard?
I can't argue with what your logic is there, but I would like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It is wonderful to look out here and see a crowd. I know we see a lot of these faces every month, and some of you have to be here, is the only reason they're probably here, but it's still good to see you. And I would like to see everybody back next month with Bring a Friend. Thank you.
Terry?
Thank you. Appreciate everyone coming out. Usually during this time, say something about our employees, and I'm going to do that tonight. Paul Moore, the event Saturday night, even though there were some of the largest raindrops I've ever seen, that was great, and I appreciate what you did and all the support you got from Mr. Blackwelder and John and everyone else. But that was impressive. The other thing, shout-out to the department, I would like to say to Human Services, I think Ms. Wright has already left, but we got our accreditation for the next three years. That was passed. We knew that was coming, but it's now for public consumption, so almost got a perfect score, missed it by one, I believe. And so just all the work that went into that, that was a tremendous amount of work, and appreciate that. And I have a rescue dog, and you're right. So anyway, appreciate you being here, and come back next month.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. We are now going into closed session. Let me read what I need to read here, and we'll get a motion. Closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11a6 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual, public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual, public officer, or employee. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Ms. Finney and Terry, seconds. All in favor? We're now in closed session. Thank you. Thank you all for coming, though.
I'm on my floor, Andy.